Alrighty, let's call this meeting in order. Please rise to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you just sign on?
Yeah, I'll sign on. Item three, any citizen is earned to be heard. Hearing nine, item four, consideration of possible action approved in minutes for April 6, 2020.
Make a motion to approve this?
Say it. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Five, receiving report from David, all the emergency managers that were regarding the status of FEMA projects and measures.
You've missed the thought all day.
Thank you for this. So, just kind of a quick rundown. This is all related to our May flooding events of last year. FEMA changed things just a little bit this last year on how we did them previously. We had to do what they called a disaster inventory list. And that's where each of the, each of you guys had your road sites that met FEMA's criteria. We had about 350 sites, give or take, between the three road districts. Then as part of that, it was either 100% complete or less than 100% complete. On those, the under 100% completed were the one that FEMA was trying to work to get you guys the money as soon as they could. I know those were at different stages, 70, 80, 90%, but they weren't quite 100%. So they, we've been able to collect some money. You guys can see, I kind of tried to break it out based off the PWs and then off the road districts. FEMA 75% is what they pay so so far. Sorry, my mask here. We've received is the whole county, 333,102.94. And then that's broke out between the three road districts, which was 235, 473 for one, 54,901, 67 for two, and 42,727, and 85 cents for District 3. We still have our John Beasley, has been my FEMA contact since this all started back in August. He's worked with us and he's had other counties as well. He's still our contact. He was supposed to go home. It was in March, first of March, middle of March. And then all the virus stuff happened and so he, he actually is home now, but he's still our FEMA contact. He's from Connecticut, he lives in Connecticut. But he's still, we're going to be emailing and talking on the different sites. He told me, today's Wednesday, yesterday I believe it was, he emailed me. He is currently working on the fairgrounds, trying to get that finalized. We're, the hope is, we had insurance at the fairgrounds, but we're still out the deductible. So the hope is that FEMA will help reimburse part of that deductible. There's been some questions that I've had to go to the Fair Board for that they had to answer. And then Acco, Jim, and Dusty at Acco, they've both been very helpful because I don't, I don't know all the insurance questions on that deal. But John is working on that. Then he said as soon as he's done with the fairgrounds, which maybe this week or next week, he's going to work on our category B, which was our emergency protective measures, which was our overtime hours related to the flooding event, and then the barricade purchases. And then on the sites that were 100% done, FEMA's had, I believe, some challenges. I had a lady here, Denise, that was here right after the first year. And we spent a lot of time trying to get all the 100% sites in a spreadsheet that FEMA wanted. And it was sent to Region 6 and there was some questions. So John's working on trying to get all those 100% sites done to get you guys the money. And I know it takes a while and I wish it didn't take so long. But we're definitely working on it. I think you guys have a lot of time. I've spent a tremendous amount of time working with him and trying. I'll keep coming back to you guys when I have questions because I don't know, you know. So if I do have any questions, I'll definitely holler at you to get those answered as fast as we can to get their answers and go from there.
David, thanks a lot for bringing this to the board. One of the things I would be curious about on the 100% site, not to throw any more on your already overfull wheelbarrow. On the 100% sites, like, you know, how much has been, how much are we eligible for? How much, what kind of money are we talking about? You know, what kind of funds, if they reimbursed us 100% of the county, how much money are we talking about?
Let me, let me clarify the 100% then.
Sure.
So the 100% in my reference is, it was like by the end of October when we had, when our disaster inventory list, either the sites were 100% done or they were less than 100% done.
Right.
And so those sites that are 100% done FEMA, I believe is still going to pay the 75%. It's just that they were, you guys, and I say you guys, all three districts had completed those sites that were done.
Right. So I guess what I'm asking is total money, are we talking about $10,000, $2,000? Are we talking about a half million dollars?
When we're totally done with this, I would guess we're going to be somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000 total countywide.
On the 100% side?
Uh, well, no, that's going into fairgrounds. Probably, just throwing a dart, probably $400,000?
It'd be, it'd be interesting though.
You know, I can probably come up with a ballpark number.
Yeah, ballpark would be great, just something for us to kind of figure out and look at.
And it's still fluid and I know this takes a while, but we've actually, and this is going to sound crazy, but we've actually gotten money faster this time than we have in previous flooding events. Now, one thing, the state, now obviously FEMA pays 75%, the state's 12.5%. You guys are ultimately out to 12.5%. So what the state has said, when we are completely done with all of our sites, they will have to, they will send somebody up and they will audit a percentage of those, of those completed sites. If there's no issues, then we'll get the state funds. If there's issues, then they'll come back. So what we have to make sure is money that we get on sites that were not 100% when that disaster inventory list was submitted, we just have to make sure they're done. And I know you're, a lot of yours were 80%, I mean you were really close, but it wasn't quite there. So when, when all three road districts are done, we'll have somebody from the state come up. I don't know how long it'll take them, probably two or three days. And we'll drive around and they'll just look, just to make sure if they paid us for shale to be there, then shale should be there. If they paid us for rock to be there, then rock should be there. Most of our sites was shale, to put shale back because that's what we have to do. But we just have to get them to the pre-disaster condition or closest to. And obviously, it's been a while, we've had flooding events. I know the state understands that part. I mean, it's not like they're going to go to every site and see brand new shale that's just been put down, or brand new rock that's just been put down, but.
Well, I know our folks have been coordinating with you on which ones we need to finish.
Yes, yes. And you guys have all been fantastic.
And just to kind of add a little bit to that, completing these partially finished FEMA projects has taken a lot of our time to get those done as well.
To try to go back. Yeah, I know, I totally understand. But we had so many sites and that's definitely a challenge. But I honestly, I feel comfortable. I've never had any bad feelings with our FEMA guy now. One of the blessings for me has been we've had the same person from the start. And that's not how it's been previous disasters. It seems like they just get one guy what he wanted and then he'd go home and then we'd have another guy. And we'd have another guy, we have another guy. We're doing it four different ways by the time it's all said and done. But it's, it's getting there. I know it's not as fast and I know you guys would have loved to have had the money. I wish we could have got you the money months ago. But we, we are making progress and it's, it's eating that elephant one bite at a time. And we'll get him eaten eventually.
Well, you know, it's, it's been eight months since they declared a disaster. Disaster having occurred nine months ago. So yes, I do agree, they're really doing a careful job. We have 45 FEMA applications. And my understanding is we are going to be receiving probably in the neighborhood 129,000, which we now have almost 55 that's being reimbursed. And definitely comes at a good time. So I do think that they're doing a careful job and I am expecting the rest of it here in the near future. A question about the federal highway administration's reimbursement for damage. We had two sites on Indiana Meridian, one of which is completed. Have you had any kind of conversation about that?
The federal highway was going through ODOT is what I know. But I don't know anything else. Whoever your local ODOT contact is, is probably.
Alright.
He would go through.
Okay. Alright.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much. This has been most helpful. And, and the comment about having the same FEMA rep throughout this whole process is also noteworthy. I do understand that's been a problem for us for passing. But thanks David for all you're doing.
If you guys, anytime you guys have questions, please talk.
Because getting, getting this money in advance is quickly, it's not as fast as any of us would have liked, but it's a lot faster than it was. But that gives us the funds to go back and actually complete these projects, right?
Yes, sir.
Because that's the whole thing about FEMA reimbursements is.
Yep.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you guys.
Anything else? Item six, consideration of possible actions approved proclamation extending declaration of emergency due to COVID-19 until May 4, 2020. Any discussion on this? Do we need to do this?
Yeah, that's, that's a question that I would have. Is this something that is absolutely required for some sort of a reimbursement? Or is the governor's proclamation sufficient for any reimbursement we might have for emergency responses the county takes because of this emergency that was declared by the governor?
Right. In, in the past, I know with some of the FEMA projects, we had to declare the county as well to go along with the governor. I don't, I guess it ain't going to cost anything too to do it, just in case.
But if I may, I would encourage you to go ahead and sign it. And that's just going to cover that one base. I believe FEMA may, and we won't know 100% sure, but it's my understanding they're going to help with the extra cost that we spent on cleaning supplies and different things like that. Hopefully, they will actually cover all of those, I believe they will. And overtime costs related to the event. So if Damon's, if Damon had five deputies that came down with the virus and they were out and he had to have 10 guys working overtime covering for those five, then theoretically FEMA would pay the overtime cost. Theoretically. Until FEMA comes and says, yes, we're definitely going to do that. I say that theoretically because we've dealt with FEMA before. But I would encourage us to go ahead and sign that. And it just covers our base on that.
Alright. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose one minor change to this proclamation. And that is, it says until May 4th. And I would, I would add, or unless sooner rescinded by the governor. Because it's his, it's his proclamation. I mean, we're following what the governor says, right? So if the governor says on April 30th, for example, if we're out of this deal, then we should rescind that retroactively effective to the date the governor lifts the emergency.
Right, I understand that. I think the reason we put it on May 4th, that would be our, I think the governor's actually ends, what, May 2nd, which is on Saturday. We'll meet that following Monday. And if he extends his, that would give us the opportunity to extend ours on May 4th. Is the reason we shop for May 4th.
Right. Again, I think it would put us in a bit of a, an oversight situation if, if the governor said, you know, his is, his is off on the 2nd and we've got two more days where we say that it's extended here. I'm just a bit.
We can have it expire the same day and I guess we can renew it on, on the following Monday.
Well, I just wanted to add the language, unless sooner, unless the governor's declaration is, expires sooner than May 4th, I think we should go with the governor's date, right, for the expiration of this proclamation. And I think that's just, that's a minor add, I think that we can do here.
So is that in form of a motion?
That's a motion to amend, yes.
Well, and we could also visit that on the last work day of April too. What is it, April 30th? And address, I mean go ahead and pass the, this, this emergency proclamation and then revisit it if we need to rescind it or something like that on the last day of month. That's possible.
But if the, if the governor does something on the last day of the month before we meet, right? Then we could always do that. My, my point is if, if he waits until, you know, the afternoon of the 30th to say, okay, we're all going to go back to work, which we all hope he does something similar to this. Then I just want to make sure that we're not in an overreach status for four days, right? And it's just to add the language that says unless, unless rescinded earlier by the governor, right? And then in that case, we would go, we would make the proclamation end the same day that the governor rescinded the emergency for the state. And it takes, it's self-expiring at that point.
I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Item seven, consideration of possible action to free transfer in the amount not to exceed 45,000 from general government capital outlay to sheriff's general fund capital outlay for replacement of vehicle damage and wreck insurance funds in the amount of $21,207 to be deposited to general government capital outlay when received.
And before Damon, let me, we've had some struggling on how to accomplish this. The total quote for the new truck plus the new outfit is $44,845.74, which is why I said not to exceed 45. The insurance company has that they were going to repay 22,163.07, but when I looked at that, they're including $925 in tax, which we don't pay, we didn't pay tax on the truck to begin with. So I don't think we're actually going to give the tax that we never paid back. That's where the 221,207 that we're going to receive from. The sheriff's office, and Damon, I didn't get an answer. You have the EQ equipment money?
Yep.
Is that in possession or we have to file for it?
That'd be a reimbursement.
Okay. So because they have $5,000 on their grant that can go towards equipment, but it's a reimbursement, so it's all going to have to be fronted up and then come back. And then the problem we have with that is that grant can't reimburse back to general. It's going to reimburse back to their FEMA account. So this kind of gets a little convoluted in, in how to make this work. My recommendation for you all to consider would be dealing with just the cost of the truck without the outfit for, for general fund, which is $35,546.75, 21,207 of that coming back from insurance. So essentially, it would be a request of the sheriff's department for an additional, about 15,000 as an additional bump out from general government or general fund to fund the pickup. And then they can deal with the outfit on their, their cash side. I'm just trying to figure out, the funds can't intermingle, so I've been trying to figure out the way to.
Alright, so let me ask you, this is, this is for the environmental cleanup vehicles that we all benefit from in our, in our county. It's that, it's that vehicle that our environmental deputy uses to go out and find dump sites, inspect those. And then we all have been assisting and it's been a great success to our county. So this is, it's not like this is, we're going out of our way to, to help with a patrol deputy's vehicle, which, you know, if we had an emergency needed to, we certainly discussed that as well. So after what you just said Troy, is there a way that maybe we can, not to exceed an amount of five or 40,000 dollars, and then allow the sheriff to use the $5,000 grant to do the, what's left and needed for, for the upgrade for the lights and all the other things that, that it takes to make that. It is, I mean, because if that money, that $5,000 grant has to go back into one of his cash accounts, and I certainly understand how that works, then I do see where that couldn't be transferred back to the general fund to cover the loss. But we can pay part of that outfit, right? If this is what he's getting in a grant, it's $5,000. I just, I would ask the sheriff, where are you going to get the other 10 grand from?
We have to pull it over cash accounts. Yeah, the whole reason I think this is on the agenda is, is when I was looking at the vehicles and stuff like that and I'm waiting on a quote to come in for a Dodge pickup as well, is we're looking at getting a little bit bigger truck for the job that he does, pulling trailers and loads and stuff like that. And when I asked Troy, I said, I said, you know how much money, you know, that, that you guys are looking to pitch in so we can figure out what truck we can afford, basically. And, and I'm looking, like I said, going to an F-250 or 2500 to be able to pull the trailer and stuff like that. And if we don't have the money to do that, then we'll put him back in a half ton pickup. You know, so it's one of those deals where I'm looking at, at what's the amount that you guys are willing to chip in to see what we're going to have to do to buy the pickup that we think is right for that job.
Well, in the previous meeting, I thought the, the amount that they needed shipped in was $7,000.
Well, that was to replace it with a regular half ton pickup.
So the price from a half ton to a three quarter ton is, is 15,000?
No. No, but we reached out to Vance to get a quote for, on the state contract. The state contract on an F-250 is 27,762. Probably I thought it had to be four wheel drive, so that adds to the cost. Then they've got the engine costs more, the locking differential costs more, the tires cost more. I mean, I don't know how they do all that. I figured it'd just be, this is the vehicle, the contract price on a four wheel drive, this is the contract price for a four wheel drive. So, so that's why I'm reaching out to Tom Hairs at, in the city, because they usually give us a pretty good price on a truck that fits.
So just a question, from dealership to dealership, is the state contract the same? Or do they all have different prices?
Well, the thing that we found in, in pricing vehicles on the state contract is, is the state contract's the base price, but they've ordered the vehicle with a, an exterior spotlight, so that adds to the price. They ordered the vehicle with this, so that adds to the price. You know, you go to Vance, get a quote and go to, is it Bob Hare or Bob? Where we get our Dodges at, and the prices are always different. It's like the state contract, why is it the same?
Same across states.
Well, because they ordered it with this package. And this company here didn't order it with that package. It's.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'd rather buy local. About $5,000, you know, I'd be all the way back.
And that's my thing, that's why when I got this price and saw, okay, the base price is 27,762, we want four wheel drive, so that's an additional almost three grand. The engine that's in this truck is an additional $2,000. You know, how come we can't just get this $27,000 vehicle with a four wheel drive?
Yeah, but these are options, Damon. I mean, they're going to order the truck. The quote on John Vance says it's a factory order. So I mean, as far as that goes, if you look at the breakdown, the options, running boards is $409.
Well, those vehicles sitting on their lot, that's why they're trying to sell it to us.
Okay, see, the quote says it's a factory order.
They may have ordered it from the factory like that. I think it's what the sheriff was saying. And that's been my experience with the state contract is that there's a, there's a base price. It's like going and ordering a base hamburger, right? And then, not that restaurants do this, but if you want pickles and lettuce, tomatoes on it, if you want, you know, they'll charge, they will charge you extra for the pickles and lettuce and the tomato. And, you know, a good thing that, you know, car dealerships don't run restaurants is all I'm saying is, because you wouldn't get a, your base price is, is just that, right? Two pieces of bread and no mayonnaise.
You know, like I said, we're still looking for the best vehicle at the best price. We're not set on this. You know, because at the end of the day, we do want to shop local. But if the price outside is, is a huge difference, we're only forced to go for that value.
Yeah, I mean, we've got to spend the tax paid money wise.
Right, and funny, that's kind of why I brought up, you know, earlier that this is for the environmental deputy cleanup. And that's, that's a, that's an investment that I, that I think we could make a couple of times and still be money ahead. You know, getting that trash hip off of our, our county roads and bridges and creeks and byways and that sort of stuff. I don't think anybody in here would argue that point, but I just kind of feel like that's one of the better programs that we've gotten, that we work with the state on right now. It's, it's a really good program.
Yes, I agree. Crowe, is there any surprise? Make a motion.
27,762.
Nope.
Well, we don't even have numbers to make a motion on yet, so that's all.
Base price.
For target that truck.
I'm ahead of myself.
You are.
Sorry. Come out the door.
That's without.
That's with the light sirens?
No.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes. So how much is it without the?
It's 35,546.
Being for an outfit.
I was looking at the bottom.
Right, and you can pay for the outfit out of your cash付?
100% of the outfit, Damon?
Yeah, well, we would use DQ money, the reimbursement.
Well, the outfit is $9,298.
Yeah, we give you $4,000.
And you'll get $5,000 of it back.
But that's the money we can't put back in general.
Right.
No. So what we're asking for today is 35,000 to be paid upfront. And then $21,207 would come back to the general government capital outlay. Am I fault, am I on the right track there?
Right. So basically, it would be transferring, if you're looking at just the truck, 14,339.75 being moved to the sheriff from general government capital outlay, the little savings account, over to sheriff's capital outlay to offset the difference between the insurance payment and the cost of the pickup without outfit. If that's what you're looking at.
Well, we can wait till we get the Dodge quote too and talk about it then. You know, the next week if we need to.
Okay.
I mean, so it's.
How, how we need to do it.
That's, that's a little more, to Monty's point, that's a little more palatable than, you know, for us to be looking at a little more than that, or a lot more than that. When this 45,000. When this $45,000 first jumps out at you, you kinda take it back a little bit and I understand that, but once the math gets worked out, it's not really that much.
That's what I'm trying to figure out is actually we're giving up 14.
Right.
Right, at the end of the day.
Right.
Right. So Damon, if that's what, if this the truck you need and need, I mean, so be it, but if you wanna wait for the Dodge quote, I'm okay with that too.
Well, I wanna wait for the Dodge quote to see if, you know, to see if it's more palatable.
So really, I mean, I'm in agreeance to putting the money upfront and then taking the insurance money back to the general government, but I think we need to wait and get.
So we can, we can no action till we get more dollars.
Right.
This has been a struggle even in how to agendize.
If you're not in a buy.
Well, we'll make it work. We've got some vehicles he can use if he needs to, but, you know, it's just like with Dylan Geico, if they were waiting for something to say that the vehicle was totaled, well, they're the insurance company, so they finally got some paperwork saying that it was totaled and they want us to submit the title to them before we get the payment of the money. And it's like, what in the world? You know, we don't, we don't want the truck. You know, you guys can have it, but it's, it's been, we get ACO involved with it and they're kinda shaking their heads going, this is weird.
So just that, what kind of truck was it?
It was a $1,500 Dodge Ram.
Four-wheel drive?
I believe it was. Had the side toolboxes on it, built into the bed and all, it was, it had a few.
It was, okay, so it's on here. It was a police 2016 Ram 1500 four-by-fourer crew cab, eight cylinder.
So, I mean.
So we just move this to the next.
You wanna just no action it?
And we can update the numbers based on the sheriff's feedback from the Dodge? Is that what we're looking at?
So the insurance company's gonna pay $21,207 and they keep the truck?
Yes.
All righty, so you're okay with no action waiting on the next quote?
Yeah, I'd really like to wait on the Dodge.
All right, so no action. Number eight, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution approving signatures to inmate trust that came out to sheriff's office. Who, I guess you wrote this, are you okay with it?
Well, I kinda wrote it. I'm just kidding Troy. Yeah, we had a point of design and so we need to put the new point on there.
I'll hear it. I have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Number nine, consideration and possible action to approve resolution accepting $1,000 donation from Martha Young to District 2 for 1,818 tons of shale to be placed on road in Blackberry Spring position. Make the motion. Mike, I got a quick twist. Have you ever figured what that cost the county to take that $1,000 donation, just out of?
Well, the shale is 55 cents a ton.
Right? But what's that gonna cost the county to rip and pile it? That's about 80 loads of shale, load it up and truck it over there, so what's the county's investment in that?
Hmm, about $2 a ton most likely. $1.50 to $2. Actually, it's gone down some because we got that dozer, that dozer's making quick work on it. Yes. Then we have to haul it from Kingfisher, et cetera.
So about $4 a ton just to truck it. I mean, that must be kind of quite a bit.
No, we can't make a profit off of it and we're already paying for labor, fuel and equipment. So I don't see how we can charge them more than a 55 cents a ton. That's illegal, do you?
Well, no, I'm not saying to make a profit off this, I'm just saying, do you know what it costs the county to accept a $1,000 donation?
You talked about just, I guess I don't, I understand your question. Are you talking about?
We have to pay fuel. I mean, a load of rock or load of shale is about, what, 22 tons?
Yes.
About the max you can get on one, a belly dump.
Correct.
So 22 tons from the shale pit in Kingfisher over to wherever this is at, however many miles that is, there's some diesel, you know, involved in hauling that, that's a round trip, right? So you gotta trip that. And so how many loads is that? How many trips is that? What's the?
Oh, bottom line, all that has cost? I haven't added that.
That's what, I think that's what you're asking.
I see.
I'm just making conversation, man. I mean, I don't have a problem with doing it, I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, you know, if I was a trucker, I would.
My point is, I mean, this ain't, I guess that ain't my point is, right? This is why I don't think we ought to accept private additions for county maintenance because we're taking away time and money from our section line road that we can't maintain anymore. But I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Ten, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution accepting $521.70 donation from Wayne Park to District 2 for COVID to be placed on Sewer Road 600 feet east of Indiana Meridian. Make the motion to accept that. I'll second. All in, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Chairman, there are nothing for item 11 and 12.
Thirteen, consideration and possible action to approve a closing permit, road crossing permit for Cox. I'll make the motion to approve. Second. I have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 14, consideration of possible action on consent agenda items. How many we approve consent agenda? I'll sign later.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Fifteen, consideration of possible action on approving claims for payment for April
Maybe we take the same action on claims, hold, sign them in a bit, I guess. I'll second.
Make the motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
James, how far would you go with that? Item 16, consideration and possible action on approving purchase cars payment for April 20th, 2020. Did you have one? It's in the amount of $1,132.41.
Hands down, Troy.
Some. In all honesty, yes.
Somehow.
I'll make the motion to approve and second. I have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Seventeen, any citizen design to be heard? Hearing none, eighteen, comments, announcements, questions by the board? Mr. Mike?
Ready for businesses open, ready for everything open up. I'm tired of this stuff.
I'm waiting. Martin?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Nineteen, consideration and possible action on adjournment.
I'll move, second.
To adjourn.